...introductions and we have, oh, probably 25 people in the room, debaters in the room with some neat plaques and trophies. And so, Brian.
At this time, it's my honor to introduce you to the coaches of the high school debate team and the wonderful students who have participated and have brought home lots of trophies to be stored in our new trophy case, hopefully, in the future. So, in the near future, if anybody wants an argument, they're here. I'll turn it over to Mr. Hanson.
Thank you.
And, Mrs. T.
This year, the Merrill Debate Team has had extraordinary success. Every year, we've kind of been building and adding. This year, we've earned a total of 82 different awards for various competitions, and most significant of which would be the two, well, actually, three awards that we received at the varsity level in state-level competition. Debate has several different organizations within the state which debaters can compete in, but there's only two state competitions, and we managed to take first place at both. So, this year, the debate team has put a significant amount of work into, you know, what they've accomplished, and they really have earned it. I think that many of them have been with the team for several years, three years, many of them have been with it. And it was their time. They've worked hard, and they really have excelled. And number one, I would say, had been asked, I've been asked by many people, you know, what makes this program a success? And I would have to say that we, the community, and that's one thing I definitely wanted to come here tonight and acknowledge, that we don't have the funds that other schools have. You know, other schools have huge budgets dedicated to this, and it's the community that has stepped forward and really allowed us to be where we are. We have received donations, received sponsorship from multiple, you know, multiple organizations around this community, from small businesses to big businesses, to banks, to insurance companies. Without them, we wouldn't be here.
Anything, Mrs. T.
Well, I think their success is all of their hard work. You know, even when we aren't at state competition, when we do the individual schools, where we meet anywhere between 16 and 20 different schools, whether they're a first-year debater or a fourth-year debater, they are a group that you can all be proud of. They represented Merrill well. And a lot of their success goes to Mr. Hanson, too, for his persistence. And his expectations. He sets the expectations high for these kids, but yet there's incentives if they accomplish those, personal, team incentives, and, you know, they feel good about what they do, too. I don't know that I'd want to face any one of them individually.
I do on a daily basis.
So, I think all of them have worked hard.
Could we have each one maybe stand up and turn and just give their name and say what year they are in debate?
Just to give a quick, not all of the team is here. There are 33 people on the team, a couple of people couldn't make it, but why don't we start, if you don't mind?
No.
Start with the varsity debaters that did take first, if you could stand first and acknowledge who you are.
Stay.
Yeah, all three of you. The fourth person, Jessica Yonkey, was not even making it to work, so.
Hi, I'm Logan. I'm obviously part of this great team here, and my partner over there, Cory Lee, is a novice.
Go ahead and introduce yourselves as well.
I'm Jerry Supleen, and I'm on the affirmative side of this debate team, and I'd also like to represent my partner, Jessica Yonkey, who also helped us take a first place at both Tournament of Champions and at WHSFA. So, on behalf of her, I'd like to say thank you as well.
I'm Corey Melison. I'm the last of a dying breed. But it's been an honor to debate with Jessica, Jerry, and Logan these last three years. They've helped us in combination with the community and our school to place us on top of the state, and it's been an honor.
Thank you.
I'm Sarah Saw, and this is my third year in debate, and I also am a varsity debater.
I'm Joe Raymond, and this was my second year in debate, and I'm a sub.
I'm Chris Harvey. My third year from debate, I'm JV.
My name is Christina Jackwell. I'm a third-year debater. I'm varsity also, and Sarah was one of my half pairs, and I'm her negative half, along with my partner Amanda Peterson, who doesn't seem to be here, but I appreciate her, too.
Thank you.
My name is Scott Hovick, and this is my first year debating, and I represented the affirmative novice team this year.
I'm Melissa Rash. This is my first year debating on novice, and I represent the negative side.
My name is Sarah Free. It was my first year debating on novice, and she was my partner for negative, and Scott and our other partner, Marissa Beckman, was the affirmative side, and Marissa's not here tonight either.
I'm Ashley Free. This is my second year debating. I was JV this year, and I just want to say that I have a wonderful partner. She was novice at the beginning of the year, and she was my partner for JV, because my partner from last year wasn't able to do debate this year, and we did very well together, and so I want to thank her for being my partner this year.
And there's something genetic about the four years.
Okay, I'm Danielle Caxpernett, and this is my first year in debate, and like she said, I was novice at the beginning of the year, and now I got to go JV with her, and we had a lot of fun. Our negatives will introduce themselves soon.
All right. I'm not her negative, but I was JV, or this is my second year in debate. I'm a JV negative. Got to go with Joe this year. Really cool. Hanson keeps sticking me with good people.
I'm Jenny Don. I'm a first-year debater. I was a novice this year and a converted affirmative. And my partner was stuck here, but she can make it tonight.
My name's Katie Helmstetter. This is my second year in debate, JV. Chris here is my affirmative partner, and then our negative pair with Joe and Jeremy.
I'm Sarah Meier. I'm a freshman. I was a novice this year. My partner can make it tonight, Jenny again, and our affirmative side was Jenny and her partner.
I'm Nikki Maxwell. It's my third year in debate, and I'm also a varsity debater. My partner was Sarah Saw, and we represented the affirmative side. Our negative is Amanda, who is unfortunately not here, Christina Jackwell as well.
Thank you.
And a couple more in the back.
I'm Andrew Wherlin. I'm a third-year debater, and I'm a negative.
I'm Andrew Swanson. I'm a negative. I was fortunate to be pairs, the negative pair, with Ashley Free at the state Tournament of Champions, and we took fourth place, not through my partner's and I's efforts entirely. We did work very hard, but I think that a 3-8-0 record at the state competition level deserves something special. These are excellent debaters.
I'm Ian McGordon, and this is my second year debating, and I'm a negative, and this is my partner.
And so, just, you were going to say, there is only, you guys can sit, thank you. The, just so people understand, there is only one competition where JV and novice debaters actually get to compete. Right now, the organization's kind of struggling with the definitions of those categories, but the novice debaters are first-year debaters, and generally, JV debaters are second- and third-year debaters. And often tend, with all the first-place trophies that have gone to this varsity team, they kind of tend to outshine, but we had a JV team that did tie for third place and take fourth place in the tiebreaker, and that was Danielle and Ashley. They did go undefeated at that tournament, and Ian and Andrew were on the other side of that, and they did accomplish that, and our novice team tied for fourth place, I believe, and received honorable mention in the tiebreaker. So, just an extraordinary year all the way around. Everybody did a great job. Our other varsity team that we have, we had two varsity squads this year. The other varsity team did very well as well. One side going five and one and showing very good, having a very good showing, so.
I think another thing that speaks to their success is, you know, they talk about having partners and being four-man teams. However, throughout the course of the year, that doesn't happen. As Jenny said, she's a converted affirmative. She started out negative, and she was not changing. But by suggestion of their coach, they have to switch partners and sometimes debate the other side as well at different tournaments, and I think that makes them better debaters because they have to be familiar with thinking on their feet and learning how to respond to the same issue from the other side. So, I think that's one thing. They might not always agree with that, but I think they learn very well from that and makes them better.
The happiest thing I have to say about this team is that I, even if we didn't win a single trophy, the thing that makes me the happiest is this team is really bonded well together, and the fact that so many of them showed up tonight, and they'll show up to things together all the time. They work together. Many debate programs really focus on four-person teams, and just the way debate works, four people get together, they debate, and it's their combined record that allows them to do well at a tournament. Our focus isn't on that. Our focus is on all of these people bonding together and working together and achieving as a team that's worked very well, and made me very happy and very proud of them.
Any brief comments from the board? Lynn? What was the topic?
This year's topic, it is a year-long topic every single year. It's picked by the National Forensics League, and, well, we actually get to vote, all the states get to vote, it's kind of like an electoral sort of process, and this year's topic was motion policy. So, you know, Merrill being about the furthest.
Well, thank you so much to the coaches and the kids. Thank you for sharing that with us. I'd like to give you a good one. Great job. Good luck as you pursue next year's topic.
Thank you. That is on United Nations.
Thank you very much for getting up a little bit.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. I'm walking.
Thank you. Okay. Now that our audience has left, we can move back into the agenda. Moving back up to public comments and agenda requests at the top of the, at the top of the agenda, this would be the time for anyone that has questions or comments to come forward and request floor privileges. We do have, I guess, the opportunities to run for school board. The deadline is over, and we have three posted candidates. Tom Muller and Louise Schatz are running then as return board members. Lynn Zettner is retiring from the board, and we have one new candidate, Anne Redorn, in the audience this evening. And so, Anne, if there is anything on the agenda that she would like to request floor privileges on, this would be the time to do it. I want you to think about that for a minute while we see if anybody else has anything. Okay? Nothing this evening? Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to make a comment or agenda request? John?
I'm with Grant and floor privileges on any discussion that needs to come up. We've done that anyways.
We have done that in the past. Okay? To the second.
It's not a posted agenda item, so I call it, I'm not confident that that's appropriate at this time. I'm not trying to say that it's not a good idea. I just, it's not a posted agenda item. See what I'm saying? The motions that we do are a reference to.
It's public and common, grant the floor privileges.
Very well, maybe I just have a red flag, is what I'm saying.
So, would you prefer that we research it and maybe make it an agenda item? If that would be really.
That'd be my suggestion. She's already referenced it. She does it tonight, if you don't mind. I'd feel more comfortable with it, if that's okay.
Any other consensus or discussion? Seeing none? Anyone else have any public comments or agenda requests at this time? Tom?
Yes, I just would like to mention that Washington School had another very successful lighted schoolhouse last Monday. I guess I was wondering if your help might strike a little bit something publicity that was resulted from that.
I did see that little blur here. Maybe you could share just. Share just a minute of your activities from.
Our attendance was actually about half of what it normally is, but I think with the Christmas break and having to have the RSVPs back the day or two after Christmas break, that was why. But we focused on math, and we had some tax people in that our parents could ask for free tax advice, and a guy that came and did something on investing in your child's future education. Couple of our teachers did some things, math games, learning games, that you can do with your kids using a deck of cards or dice or things like that. Our computer lab, Terry Trulott, had that open again and featured some math software that kids are using, and also some fun math websites. Family Resource Center partnered with us and did some things on working with your kids with allowance and things like that. And then we had a team from Tom Hock that Mona Getke knows that taught privilege that night, because that's a great game to teach math and counting and so forth. And Artis Marte, a retired educator at Washington, did a neat thing on New Year's resolutions for fitness, financial, and fun with the family. So, we just had a great night, and as you saw by my email, Mona Getke was honored by the Merrill Forward Together as a champion of youth, so that was really cool.
Thank you, and what a wonderful opportunity for families. It's just exciting to see that kind of attendance.
And we got our retired administrator guys, that's what I call them, the regs, retired administrator guys, to serve the meal that night. So, Dr. Neal, two of the former principals of Washington were there serving the meal, so it was great.
Very good. Thank you for pressing the minister. Is there anyone else that has any comments or thoughts to share? Seeing none, we'll move on from public comments. Administrative reports, I believe there was just one that was added in our, we just received one as a memo from one of the administrative groups, but there's nothing else in our package.
If you can hear.
Thank you. And we did, the debate team, the district audit review will be next on the agenda. I believe Mr. Miller is with us this evening, and I believe everyone on the board received a packet of the audit, the whole packet form, and in your agenda, there are some pages, just some administrative letter. Would you wish to just maybe briefly kind of go over that?
Briefly? I'm going to go through this whole thing.
Oh, thank you.
There's going to be a quiz. At the last school I was at, Shawnee, one of the board members said, do we really have to go through this? Does anybody know what this guy's talking about? I called him, says we're going through the whole thing, and there'll be a quiz. No, we will be brief, but I will tell you, if you're a little confused by some of the numbers, for those of you that have been on the board for several years and have been going back and looked at a different report, this report can be confusing because it's presented in two ways. It's for the year ended June 30, 2003, of course. One way is called the Gatsby way. We incorporated some new accounting standards. Europe's such a size that the accounting industry now says we have to look at you more like a business, where we take your capital assets instead of sticking them over on the side in a memo type of entry, we have to put them in the different funds that you operate under. So, as a result, your funds are increased in value because of the millions of dollars of capital assets that are controlled by the fund. In the same respect, long-term debt is no longer shoved over on the side, which is a traditional government approach. It now also belongs in the individual funds for which the debt was incurred, and as well as depreciation on your assets and interest and principal payments on your long-term debt. So, what, in essence, if you did not have a lot of new debt, and this is, if you get a lot of new debt, they have a lot of new buildings, they've had a building program five or six years ago, and so you have a lot of debt that pretty much is equal to the value of your building. So, actually, you really did not do that much as far as increasing your fund balance. But I'm just going to briefly go through what, a new part of the audit is called a management discussion and analysis, and it's really a district letter which summarizes the financial statements. It's on page three of the audit. I'm going to go through the highlights of it. The, if you look on page, page six, and the presentation that's discussed in the management discussion analysis pretty much talks about the new, the ideas or the statements that are presented, are presented in accordance with the new accounting concepts. Page six is an income statement. It's no longer called an income statement. It's now called a statement of net assets, but basically, it's the same type of statement that you would have found in last year's audit report, only it would have been called as a statement of revenue and expenditures. It talks about government activities in the first column, and basically, what that means is those are all the activities of the school district with the exception of food service, which is accounted for in the second column. The district has elected to use the food service as a proprietary or business-type activity, where the funds do not, for example, go back into a general fund to become part of the budget process again. Those funds stay in that activity. The district charges fees more based on actual costs in addition to state aid. So, that particular function, the food service function, is separated from all your government activities. And in summary form, because Pat mentioned something to me about 10 minutes, if you look toward the bottom, you have net assets, the bottom figure, which is net assets, June 30, 2003, of $1,146,646. That is the net worth of the district. If you had a balance sheet, if I could just have you look real quickly at page, hold this page, I'll see. Look real quickly at page nine. Page six would be the balance sheet or the roadmap. Page nine, excuse me, page six would be the income statement or the roadmap. Page nine would be the balance sheet or the snapshot as of one day on June 30, 2003. You'll see the bottom figure, total net assets of $1,146,646, and just a few notations about the balance sheet. You'll notice, if you go down to the second set of assets, first it says assets, current assets, and then non-current assets, you'll notice you would have not seen these figures in your previous balance sheet where you list all of your different net assets. Those are assets net of appreciation of $28,775. And then if you look at your liabilities underneath there, current liabilities, and in the next section, non-current liabilities, actually, the non-current liabilities pretty much represent the debt that's set, the debt that was used for construction of the building. So, last year, you would have had a fund balance that didn't include this. The $1,146,646 net asset value actually has, includes $925,000 that's restricted for future debt payments. Right above that, I'm looking at the bottom of the page here, the $5,317,000 is your net investment in capital assets, and that would be your capital assets less any debt that is identified to purchasing the capital assets. So, really, what that leaves is unrestricted, which is a deficit. And the unrestricted ordinarily, under the traditional prior years, would not have been negative, but what happens under this concept is we have long-term debt. It's not only long-term debt that's been used for buildings, it's also long-term debt that's tied into future benefits of employees, and that's the big one that really brings this thing down. Previously, again, in previous audit reports, that's been discussed, are discussed in memo fund, but has not been allocated to a particular fund. So, you have, for example, your unfunded liability in the Wisconsin Retirement Fund, which we've talked about in the past. You have sick leave accruals convertible to future benefits for health insurance for employees. We book those if we know the employee is eligible for retirement. In addition, there are amounts that are not booked, which, if you would have an actuary study, would probably at least equal double that amount. And that would be based on people who are not yet eligible for retirement, but their chances of retirement are statistically determined, could be statistically determined times the benefits that they would have coming. And districts aren't required to do that, but there is a, there is an accounting concept being floated around that says governments in the near future most likely will be able to, would have to undertake such a study, and would have to book those expenses. And what that would do is make that $5,094, probably significantly figure, probably twice the amount, and that's just off the top of my head, but I would say, I would say I wouldn't be surprised if it was twice that amount. And every district kind of does that. Oh, my gosh, we have a lot of debt that's not, we don't know about. Every district in the state, probably most of it in the nation. I would say very few actually do an actuary study. That's the, what's called the net asset concept, where we consider long-term assets. If you were to look at the concept that we, that you budget under, which I think is the one you really should pay more attention to, that is the one that provides resources in the years that are needed and possibly for a little, for a few months after. You do a budget. The budget is based on what you need next year, and you raise your tax levy, you set your fees and so forth, based on going from operating period to operating period. And those are discussed on pages 12 and 13. The income statement on page 13 is similar to, is basically the same income statement that you would have had in previous years. It shows a general fund, special education funds, that's, for example, special ed and some special grants, other governmental funds. Under this concept, you have a net fund balance of June 30 of $3,836,657. Do you see that? Okay. That one basically is spendable resources. Where under the statement of net assets, we're not talking about spendable resources, we're talking about your net worth, whether the cash flows into the system next year or five years down the line is not, is not a principle of that. Under this one, this is net current assets are spendable resources. So, this one gives you, for operating purposes, a little better handle of where you sit and where you're going to be next year, or what you can use in the next current year. And I won't go through this tonight, but this gives you a good summary of, if someone has some questions about this, of course, I'll be happy to answer. This gives you a good summary also of what's in your post, both on the net asset or the fund balance approach. If I told you to pay attention to something in this report, it would be the statements that are on pages 12 and 13, because those are the things you work with when it comes to budget time. These are the balances you have to consider when you put your budget together, and these are the things that Pat Arndt is more, I have to give you information on than she is on the Gatsby 34, complicated statements.
Lynn? Bill, on page three, I undermined and kind of focused on this fund balance because we've always been grounded that it's like a checkbook balance rather than a savings, I should, checkbook balance at the end of the month, or at the end of the year in this case. But would you review for us that second bullet point under financial highlights on page three, so that we understand that it's not $3,800,000 that's in our fund balance for spending, that in fact, it's only about 24% of that?
Okay, on the governmental fund, yeah, either word, we're talking about either June 30.
Right. As of July 30, yes. And then it says that approximately 20%, 24% of this total.
Sure. I'm going to add, I'm going to go back to page 12.
I think in your management letter, you also had a nice capsulization of that on page four. Is that what you were referring to, Bill, there, the fund balance, that was in the packet? I don't know what you're talking about. Yeah, I'm on page four of this team. $3,836.
Yeah. If you, if you look on, if you look on page 12, page 12, you'll find, I've got that figure highlighted, by the way, but lower right. highlighted, by the way, but lower right-hand corner, the fourth item from the bottom, you see that $3,836? That's the figure that Lynn's referring to. Of that amount, there are certain, I always say, look at yourself as having a pair of bib overalls, okay? You've got a whole bunch of pockets in those bib overalls. Your wife takes some money in this pocket and says, now, this is for this, okay, we need a new car five years down the road, and this is how the family's going to operate. Car money goes here, okay? The restaurant money goes here when we go out to eat, and stick stuff in a whole bunch of other pockets. And what we have left to do whatever we want, honey, is the $935,000. So these other funds, and all these other pockets, those are represented up above. Federal funded aid, there's some federal program money, there's some scholarship money. Of course, you can't spend scholarship money to run the district, because somebody gave you a gift and said that gift's got strings attached to it. Debt service money, you have debt covenants, you have legal instruments that says you will levy so much debt, and that money will be set aside in a special account to be used for nothing else. That's $925,000. That's all you legally can use that for. Then if you get down to the big one, cash flow, that's, that is a figure that's set aside to represent what the district needs for operations. And basically, it's based on, you can go, as I mentioned, the balance sheet is a snapshot, but if you go month by month by month and cash flow yourself out, you're going to find there are times when cash flows below the danger line. So what do you do? You actually have to go back and borrow. I think at the end of the year, you were, you had borrowed $5 million, but of the, to get you through. And this is for operating periods, and there are times when you're above the line without that, and there are times where you couldn't operate unless you did that. But the district doesn't get a $1.5 million for cash flow purposes. Well, so what's left? If you had all of those figures that said $3,836,000 that you referred to, and what's left, left uncalled for, undesignated, is the $935,000, which is really not a lot when you consider your budget. Merrill's always been, back when you were a city school district, way back when, you budgeted on a calendar year, we don't do that anymore, but the district has never really felt comfortable in levying a lot of money for the purpose of creating a fund balance. And that's the only way you're going to create your fund balance. It's more, it's been more in tune with, well, we really didn't spend everything we anticipated, or we had more revenue in some area that we didn't think we were going to get, and that's pretty much how your fund balance has increased. But as I point out in the management letter, it's hard to say what exactly is a fund balance that is comfortable, but we like to say 20%, 25% gives you a lot of breathing room. You're nowhere near that in any sense of the word. So you say you have an adequate fund balance? No, you really don't. If you did, you wouldn't be borrowing $5 million a year to get you through the rough trades.
It also affects, as we've talked about before, our cash flow balance, also our bond rating. And it'll come to surface again on the 28th when we look at refinancing some debt. We have more, we actually have more that we, you know, we'd have available, that we could refinance, but we can't because of the limit of how much we've already taken on cash flow. So that will play into it, because we don't have the bigger fund balance. And it can affect interest rate. So it works against us and in favor, and I've shown you other things on that before.
Anything else, then? Anyone else have questions?
Could I just kind of follow up on this question? The $935,000, does the money that was returned, that's the correct term, as a result of Act 11, is that included in that $935,000?
Well, does that still, is that still there?
Yeah, it's $321,000 we had reserved under Employee Wisconsin.
Okay, that's part of that.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay, right there. It's not in the 935, but it would be in the $3,836.
Okay, I see. All right, thank you.
Anyone else have questions? Seeing that, anything else from you?
I would just say, it looks like, when you look at your, when you look at these comparable to last year types of figures, you, you actually, the general fund was approximately $165,000 to the debt. But when you look at your total expenditures of almost $25 million, that's $165,000. You know, it's, you might as well say we broke even, which is kind of the budget concept. So you did hurt yourself, and you did yourself a little bit for the year. I think if you could continue operating like that over the years, hoo-ha, you're in good shape. So you're not in the worst shape, but don't let anybody tell you that you have a lot of root despair. A little flux in special ed, and, you know, that could be gone.
Dr. Smith?
And I just want to clarify, you use the bib overhaul scenario, that, you know, you say, well, honey, that other pocket's what we have to spend. And I think that's part of where you two are going to, that it isn't accounted for, it isn't reserved for something, but yet it plays into all of the other things that I've mentioned. So it isn't like a picky bag sitting there that could be given away, because it would really hurt.
That's true.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
That takes care of audit. We are moving on to district-wide crisis plan, which is IDONCT, and it's included in the packet on pages eight through 98.
Yeah.
A lot of work, Mrs. Donnell.
There's no tree lovers in. I'm also going to give you the, because the copy that you received, there were some editing items that still needed to be done, and so these are what the final products are going to look like.
Colin, are you still with us? I'm sorry, I keep forgetting you're there. Okay, I'll try to remember to come back and ask you for that comment.
She's 25 minutes.
Colin.
He's right there. Colin, on the phone. Somebody, I think somebody, did someone get one without tabs?
Without tabs?
I don't have tabs.
Colin, did you get your tree ring binder?
Oh, I think I did.
It'll be waiting. It'll be waiting for you.
Being placed with having the added responsibility of the emergency care coordinator and safety coordinator for the district, a request was made by each of the building administrators to submit a copy of their crisis response plan, safety response plan, intervention-prevention response plan. And the reason why I'm saying that is, as they came in, each building, each building's plan was a little bit different than the others, no two were alike. All of them covered the same ingredients, but yet they weren't alike. And when we're talking about responding to a crisis, and because of the amount of individuals within our district, that traveling teachers, students in different buildings at different times, substitute teachers, it was felt that we needed to have a consistent response plan in format, the same and alike in each of the buildings. And that's what arrived, about the need to revise. That along with our systemization process that we currently are undertaking with other components within our district. I contacted Edward Steele with Wausau Insurance. Wausau Insurance is our insurance carrier. He is the loss prevention service director with them, and he helped me in taking a look and reviewing our crisis plan. He also works with Wausau, D.C., Everest, and Stevens Point. And so what he did was, he got me copies of those districts, and we sat down and just took a look at different components, ingredients that were included in theirs compared with the one that we had. I then mixed and matched and did a little bit of changing and adjusting here and there. He then took a copy and went back and reviewed it and made some suggestions for revision with his team. I took it back, made revisions. I then gave it back to him, and he looked at it and maybe made a few more, which, this is how we arrived at this evening. If you take a look, and I'm not going to read through, because again, you've had, and I haven't been here in how many days, you can look at it through your, at your leisure, just some of the main ingredients of it, if you turn to the table of contents, emergency contacts, thought that, and this was, for example, one thing that was done a little bit different, putting them all up front. And I guess, just so I can describe with you, and it will be described to staff members, how it's going to be implemented, is each building administrator during a staff meeting will bring their staff members up to speed and review this with them, designate where in their rooms these are to be kept. If you flip to the Roman numeral number two, there shows a list of the emergency care designees. These are, just as indicated with the brief descriptor underneath, these are individuals that are trained, first aid and CPR through the American Red Cross, with classes that were taken at, through the Merrill Fire Department or through Sally Fond at the high school. Also included with this would be our crisis team members, and the difference being there, what's the difference between an emergency care designee or a crisis team member? A crisis team member would be anybody that would be contacted in case, let's say, of a bomb threat or death of a student or something along those lines. So different than an emergency care person, that would be, for example, if a staff or student passed out in class or whatever. One other thing that we talked and we discussed about with, and having, and I wanted to keep this document as simplified as possible, the need for maybe having an even quicker response for those emergencies or crises that may occur on a regular basis or be more apt to occur. And so one other component that is going to go along with this, that will be, and the plan is to put it in each of the classrooms, by a teacher's desk, by the phone, on their computer, will be a quick response, just a quick reference flip chart. And that hasn't been completed yet, but looking something like this with, and I still haven't worked on, I'm going to meet with Ed again as far as what we want to include, like emergency contacts, against, faculty member, you know, passes out on the floor, oh, my gosh, what do we do, what do we do? And for student reference as well, just a quick reference can flip to, what do I, and he'll explain, what do I do? And where do I go? Who do I contact? And again, having each of these in each of the classrooms. So that's still yet to be done. One other part that is going to go along with this crisis response plan, that again was included in some of the, some of the binders that some of the buildings submitted were prevention and intervention measures. And that's going to be a document that is also going to be distributed, but I didn't want it to be included with the crisis response plan, this being for more immediate situations, that being more for preventative measures, so that it wouldn't become too cumbersome, too full, in case of a response.
Any questions for Jeff? We are looking to adopt this this evening. Can you comment on your question?
What is your training procedure? What's your timeline? Are you going to practice these things?
This is going, we want to, we want to get this to staff member, and every, by the way, every staff member in the district will have this. As far as implementing that, we're going to want to put that in place as quickly as we can. The training for this and how to use this and the ingredients that are going to go into this will be done at a staff meeting or within your own building.
So, I mean, we'll actually practice with students eventually, lockdowns? Or?
As of right, as of right now, we don't.
You have to be determined.
Yeah, you have to be determined.
There's strategies both ways, there's philosophical things, you know, we've had some beginning discussions on that, but we still, there are a lot of things that you want to do, there's some things you don't, you know, as far as the actuals, we all, we're all used to fire girls and all that. But we did have a beginning discussion with, and I'm not going to forget the term, some crisis planner, and it was Lincoln County or, I can't remember what, who it was, but, you know, some other things that we may look at, especially at the high school. And so those, the beginnings of those discussions have started. That's about it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Larnon, our promotion to approve the district-wide crisis plan is presented, please.
I will approve it.
Do I have a second to that motion? Carrie?
I'll second that.
Any other discussion, please?
No, I would thank Mr. Donnell for all of his work. I think it's, it's really a good thing that the whole district is running on the same program. And that's for him.
Carrie?
I agree, it was real interesting reading, as he kind of flipped through, and I just kind of paged through a little bit, it was interesting.
Any other comments? Lynn?
I appreciate the straightforward, step-by-step language. The language is critical in an emergency that it's brief.
Seeing no other discussion.
Sorry, Brandon, I was just impressed how quickly you were able to compile this.
I had a lot of help, and by the way, I'd like to commend Lori Pogel played a big part in helping me to put this together. And so I'd like to acknowledge her efforts. And then, and also Ed Steele, I mean, he was a great help. You know, many times, and again, also, also two of the other administrators within the district looked at and made suggestions for revisions too, but sometimes I think we maybe forget the outside help that's, that is there to take advantage of, because he was more than willing at any time to make the drive up to go through, to, to give supplemental information from other districts. He also is going to, I guess one other point, that is somewhat related to this, we're going to be setting up an annual walk-through of buildings with him and his team. And again, it's going to maybe more go along with the lines of Save Schools and the safety plan that we're going to have for the district that will be submitted to you at a date to be determined. But again, it's connected with this, and it just really was nice to have his analytical eyes take a look at and the suggestions that he had.
No other discussion, and all those in favor of approving the crisis response plan is presented, signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed, to name. Anyone abstaining? Colin, did you vote aye?
Sure did.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't hear you. Thank you very much, Jeff, we appreciate it. Lori and everyone who worked on this.
This fighter, Louise.
Yes, Louise is a little more vocal, you'll have to speak up more often. Moving on to Student Board of Ed representative report. Brandon and Liz wants to start off tonight.
All right, well, next Wednesday and Thursday, we'll have the semester finals for students, and on Friday, we will have in-service for students, so we get a break after the finals.
For the high school musical, the spring musical has been cast, and people have, the cast has started practicing. Performance will be April 1st through 3rd in the high school auditorium.
I have sports. Wrestling teams, two and one, they will be taking on D.C. Everest at D.C. Everest, maybe bring it up to three and one. Hockey, well, they're zero and eight right now, but this Thursday, we have play against Marshfields, who's only one and six, so we might have a chance. We're looking, we're looking for them this year, getting up there. Girls' basketball team is six and one, they're tied for first in the valley, and they're looking to play Marshfield at home on Friday. Girl, or boys' basketball is two and five, and they will also be playing Marshfield.
And then we have forensics. The competitive season has begun for the forensics team. Our first competition will be sub-districts on February 12th, which is held here in the district at Merrill High School. And student council, student council is sponsoring a Valentine's dance on February 13th from eight o'clock to midnight. eight o'clock to midnight.
The high school jazz bands will be down at the Stevens Point Jazz Fest on, on January 30th, and I'm a member of the jazz band, and last year I had the unique experience, the person that helped us out with our band was the person who wrote the book that I learned to play bass from, so.
We also have a band concert coming up, the Wind Ensemble and the Soplahter Bands will have a concert entitled Movie Mania on February 2nd at some sort of high school auditorium. As a winner, someone brighten those, and the things we'll be playing include melodies like songs from Star Trek, and Who's My Superstar, some Simon and Garfunkel, things like that. And then the academic decathlon team, our team attended regionals on January 9th, at UDL Stevens Point, and in the past 22 times that they've competed, this is the 21st time, that they've qualified for regionals, and they competed against 71 other teams throughout the state. And we received, the team received many individual awards. I know there were some, there was a first-place interview, a third or fourth-place speech, I think a first-place baton, there were some, a student awarded for music, and I think there were some other areas. So, we did very well.
On February 9th, there will be the local solo ensemble. Every Merrill High School student has to compete in this solo ensemble, it gives them a chance to focus on their music and get critique, so if they plan to go onto the district area solo ensemble, which is also usually held at the high school here. And John Gervell and Katie Wade will be joining the All-State Band on January 31st, will get to practice with other students and band members from around the state, and Wisconsin rappers. Later on that night, they will be performing for the Wisconsin chapter of the National Band Association.
And I also have two things to add. On January 29th, there's going to be a freshman orientation from 6:00 to 7:30. This is mostly, mostly for parents, but students are also invited. The guidance department and also the administrators are going to give presentations to the parents and students, and then there will be tours afterwards. And then, academic awards, we've been working on, Student Council has set up a committee with help from the administration, working on making academic award ceremonies better, improving them, helping to recognize our students better. And we sent out, we mailed surveys to ask parents, we mailed surveys out to every student who received an award in the fall, which was 233, this includes, you know, two students in one home, so they got two letters. But we mailed out surveys, asking parents for comments, and if they would rather do a banquet-type setting once a year than to do the regular ceremony that we do. And we received 51 in favor of a banquet, and 41, or 42 not in favor. So, Student Council has decided that we're going to do a banquet in the spring, and for now, our tentative date for that is May 17. And right now, we're still planning where the food, how we're going to do the meal, the location, and which speaker we're going to have, so, but we decided we're going to do one banquet instead of two ceremonies. We're hoping to get a lot better attendance and to recognize our students better.
I'm glad you're working on it, the academic awards is something, I'm glad you're talking about it and trying to do something special. Any other questions or comments for student representatives? Seeing none, thank you very much for your report. Anything on legislative this evening?
No, I don't have anything to discuss right now.
Old business is none, and moving on to new business. Item E, we have minutes of December 17th, regular board meeting, you know, in your packet. Everyone was present, but Louise was on the phone, so I believe she can vote on those minutes as well. We have a motion to approve the minutes of the December 17th meeting. John?
I will.
Do I have a second? Kurt?
I'll second.
Is there any corrections, discussion, additions to those minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. Anyone abstaining? Thank you, thank Karen. Heard you that time, Colin, thanks. Claims and vouchers, so, Tom?
Yes, I would offer a motion to approve vouchers numbered 70929 through 71956, in the amount of $2,175,854.51.
Do I have a second? We?
I will second.
Any discussion, Tom?
Again, that was very helpful in explaining large amounts of money, it was kind of a nice deal, but I understand where it's going on the line, so we appreciate that.
I would agree, it takes a lot of money to keep this outfit running.
Any other questions or discussion on the vouchers? If there are none, and vote to approve vouchers, as stated, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. Anyone abstaining?
Check number 71883.
Thank you, John. Check number 71385, and check number 71890. Thank you. Anyone else? Colin, was that an aye?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, those are approved. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, it involves a quitclaim deed to the town of Pine River land. There was a recommendation from Jay Tolusti, our attorney, on pages 104 and 105, involving some property and a deed from, I believe, 1909, and school district property. Sally, did you want to make a comment about Jay's recommendation?
Sure, I believe it's very, I don't know if routine is the right word, but, you know, it's, it's a cleanup of paperwork, of misunderstandings, or, or just taking and making sure that paperwork is appropriate. Way back, years, many years ago, there was, in section, there was an acre put aside for school districts, so they first were really starting the county school district in our state, and so, if they weren't used, you know, they reverted back. And so, this is some paperwork trail that needs to be cleaned up for the individuals who own it, so I do recommend that you follow Mr. Tolusti's recommendation.
Are there any questions or discussion on this recommendation to approve the quitclaim deed to return an acre of property in the town of Pine River to these two families? Seeing none, is someone wishing to make a motion to approve the quitclaim deed?
Can we approve the quitclaim deed?
Do I have a second? Brandon, second round. Any other discussion, Tom? Any other? The two families would be Timothy and Pamela Mote, and the second family, Edward and Don Any other discussion or questions on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval of the quitclaim deed signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. Anyone abstaining? That motion carries. Moving on to the district writing assessment, on pages 106 to 115, I believe we have some information from Donna, Karen, and Health, and they're going to step up and give us a little presentation on what's going on with district readiness.
Good evening, how is everyone today? Good. Just going to pass off the line, we're using this for this. The attachment is something that we worked with principles on yesterday.
Don's passing on a little outline on the writing assessment, Colin, John is current, and Jeff Damaro at the table discussing.
Okay, I'll begin, I'm involving Jeff Damaro and Karen Helt here, because both of them have been working with different parts of language arts, and as we transition from what we're doing with our improvement efforts in the district, what we've been doing with our improvement efforts in the district, to our systemization plans, this will be a component of the literacy part of the systemization plan, of which Jeff and Karen are going to be in charge of tending to that piece of it, in case they're going to do this as well. We're going to have a four-part presentation here, in about 10 minutes, and then attempt to answer any questions that you have. The first part is, we're going to just do a quick review of where we came from with the development of a writing assessment, and part that we talked about the last year and the year before, and just going to build upon that. Then we're going to transition into discussing with the administrators and with the faculty on the district writing assessment plan. And last summer, we had a summer academy here on the teaching of the six traits of writing, so we're just beginning that now, and that's not, that hasn't happened district-wide yet. So, now we're going to move into, or from the historic, where we came from with the development of the writing assessment, to what are we doing with the writing assessment right now in the district?
Okay, this year, the assessment was given in mid-October at grades three, seven, and nine, using the same prompts from last year, the high school tweaked theirs a little bit, the kids were addressing it a little bit more informally, so they wanted to just change the wording a little bit to get more of a formal essay from them. In late October, then, we scored it, and I want to take this opportunity to thank the scoring team that was in your packet, they, those people, and you read essays for two days, they, they had lots of chocolate. That was our first, our crisis response for scoring the writing assessment. But anyway, I thank them for doing that. Technology was really our friend this year, we were able to input the data as the teachers were scoring into a database, which really helped us to turn around the results very quickly. So, between when they scored at the end of October and mid-November, we were able to get out parent letters, to, either they were mailed at the middle school and high school, or they were given out at parent-teacher conferences at the elementary level, get those in teacher, or in parents' hands, so they knew how their kids did, it defined the six, each of the six traits of writing, and then let them know how their kids did in each of those. We also were able to very quickly, within that time period, turn around to teachers on, on added glance lists, class lists, or at the ninth grade, the whole ninth grade was bulked together because they're not organized by room, so we were able to get that into the teachers' hands, so they could see added glance which kids needed some immediate intervention, okay? So, we were very pleased with how that went this year, a little bit smoother than last year. Then we did some further analysis, not at the individual level, but as, as a class group at grades three, seven, and nine in December, and if I can direct you to that part of your packet, we'll just walk through one of those very quickly. I'll just look at the third grade one. We have some miracle data from last year and this year, and again, oh, I'm sorry, I don't know what page it is in your packet, but it says-
It's grade three at the top.
I think it's page 110.
Thank you. We have two years of data here, and we really are looking at this as baseline data, as we get started in the six traits of writing. You're comparing two different classes, okay, so we, you know, we kind of caution people on comparing apples to oranges, and we're really looking forward to keeping track of how our kids are doing as they become more and more proficient in the traits, and also looking at how cohort groups, next year, we'll be able to take a look at for the first time how last year's seventh graders did on the ninth grade assessment next fall, so there's real participation involved there. Other things that are in there, the teachers last year asked for some real specific feedback from the scoring teams, and so we tried, you'll see the next part of each report, and there's one in here for seventh grade and ninth grade as well, you'll see strengths and challenges, again, from last year, and then from this year. And again, this year, we asked the scoring teams to be very specific, not just to say conventions were weak, but what within conventions were weak, so teachers could really zero in on that feedback to work on improvement with their students. The next thing that you'll see on the flip side of each of those sheets are recommendations for the scoring team. One of the things that they did this year was identify, okay, who, who would we consider to be a writer that's going to need some additional intervention? And those at grades three and seven, they were determined at 1.5 or below in any of the traits would be an area teacher's either kind of red flag and saying we need to do something. And as the kids progress and get older, high school determined if kids are still at the basic level, which is 2.0 or below by high school, we really want to intervene. Now, again, the caution with that is because of when we assess, which if you go back to why we redid this in the first place, we wanted to assess in the fall of the year prior to when they have to take that WKCE writing assessment, so that we'd have a whole year. So, the ninth graders, for example, that took this, half of them have not had basic comp yet at all, okay, and the other half have been there for probably about a month, okay? So, again, it's when we assess, but we wanted to know, where are they, so we know where we need to get them. The other thing that you'll see is specific student improvement targets, and this is where we're really focusing teachers in terms of what they can do with classroom interventions, what specifically can we do as teachers? Not just third grade teachers, because the assessment's given in third grade, but as kindergarten, first and second grade working toward that, as fourth, fifth, and sixth grade working toward the seventh grade assessment and so forth, what can we really focus on with our kids? So, you'll see those organized in each grade as well. I think that's all I need to tell you right now.
If you take a look in the handout that Don gave you, pre-K handout, and if you turn to the Writing Assessment Results Faculty Meeting Agenda, it turns that the district PK12 were to be, to be on the same page in covering and reviewing those, those student records. Don did this when we, when you as a board, and as, as our building staff members, and at the building level, we went through our, the different chainsaws with Bruce Miles as far as the budgeting, put together a faculty agenda, something that we hadn't really done, it was, we, as far as presenting information on a district-wide level, the three levels many times worked separately, and with doing this and generating this, the attempt is that as a district, we're going to all be on the same page as a student moves from kindergarten all the way up through their senior year. And again, with writing, as our students can attest, how do they communicate what they know? They do it verbally, or they do it by writing? And writing, that's done in literally every class, and with every subject. And so, again, just backtracking a little bit, and, and fulfilling what Don had said, with the reason and rationale, and the importance that MAPS is placing on doing writing assessments, and the importance of it, the focus of it. If you take a look, and I'm not going to read through the different, or five different points, as far as the writing assessment results, and how we will arrive at intervening, in the last page on there, you'll see the Writing Intervention Plan, and again, with this, try to keep it, try, and attempt to keep it as simplistic as possible, not too cumbersome, not too complicated. This is what's going to be used, so that a student's performance can be bridged from one year to the next, so that different attempts to, to work with and improve that student, student's ability in writing from one year to the next, the wheel doesn't have to be reinvented from, from one year to the next, you can take a look at what's been tried in the past, what's worked, what hasn't worked, to build on that.
Yeah, just building on what Jeff said there, what Dr. Sarnstrom wants, what I want, what Karen and Jeff want, what the administrative team want in this is the same, we want to make sure we're following up, so this, so this influences classroom instruction over time, and causes student, student writing to continually improve. And doing that over time will impact, will have a positive impact on student learning in all their core areas. What Jeff just referred to is that, that's one of the ways we're beginning to do that follow-up, you know, both with the teachers and with the administrators, to make sure that we're consistent in having those faculty meetings, pre-K12 giving that same message. And then also, so we can document in the intervention folder, for all the students who are students who need writing assistance, the teachers can document, what interventions have they tried? Have they worked? What interventions have they tried that haven't worked? tried? Have they worked? What interventions have they tried that haven't worked? And then when they conference with the following-year teacher, third-grade teacher, the conference is a fourth-grade teacher about this substance, what, what better conversation can a teacher have than helping that student jumpstart their learning the following year, taking a look at where they are, what we've tried, what's worked well, what hasn't worked, and what, what do I need to continue to reemphasize the following year? Okay?
This is going to be used when that discussion occurs. The discussion between third and fourth, fifth and sixth, those instructors will be in May, June, or August, September. And not to say that, that this document can't be gone back to at any time during the year if, if something else crops up that, you know, red flag goes up.
Okay, and the last part is our future considerations. I'm just going to wrap this up. And the big one is connecting as far as the progress that we've made to date and then shifting all of this into our systematization plan to make sure that this really is going to happen to a high degree of quality, pre-K-12. And that's really where our, our big shot with staff development will come in, because you have to remember, we're just, even though this is quite an immense task we've taken on in the last several years, we're still just coming out of the blocks with this right now. Okay? Comparing and contrasting to the state writing assessments, again, as we build this and take a look at our trend data, how, how are our students doing in our local assessment as anchored against their performance in the state writing assessment? And, and then to ask those critical questions, how are they doing? You know, is there a difference? Why is there a difference? Why is that happening? Staying on top, well, there's a little typo there. Sorry, didn't catch that till right now. Staying on top of the proposed ACT writing assessment requirement, and I just got done discussing this with the superintendent, and Jeff and Karen and I and Jan, I haven't talked to Jan and Brian about this, but Jan and Brian and their department at Language Arts will likely be attending a meeting in February down at Stevens Point, a day-long meeting where they're going to unveil the writing requirement for college entrance of the ACT test. So we, we don't really know much more about it than that right now. Maybe we'll be real smart when we come back. The other things that are tracked, I think Karen might have mentioned this, but I want to reemphasize, is tracking cohort groups over time. When we take a look at, when we look at having enough data on when our third-grade students this year are seventh-grade students and when that same group of students is ninth-grade students, and we start taking a look at how has our writing instruction and our, our interventions influenced their achievement over time, we will have something very powerful. And then just a continual follow-up that we intend to do with both the principals and the teachers. And I just wanted to thank Karen and Jeff and all the people who have been connected to making this possible, because it's looking pretty well.
Thank you, Don.
Questions?
Anyone have questions or comments, or Tom?
Don, you mentioned the summer academy, where I think you said that that's where the six plus one traits were presented to, to the teachers. What, what kind of participation did you get in terms of percentage of teachers? Or, I mean, did a lot of people participate at, at that kind of opportunity?
Good question. I, I think we had about fifty teachers at each of those academies, all right? But that's, that's a great question for the rationale for moving to systematization, because that's not enough. All right? What we need to do is to move that institutional, and then that's, that's going to be our plan out, just this, but with all of our key, key pieces of improvement student learning that really matter.
Is there in-service days as an example, if that's what everybody would be exposed to?
We're going to figure out multiple ways to skip, to deal with that. And, you know, managing six improvement targets, you know, is going to be a little bit thrust to wrestle with. But what we're going to do is likely do it, you know, in ways we've done in the past, but the difference is going to be everybody's going to get this, everyone will be held accountable there as well.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your presentation this evening.
Good work.
Great. Moving on to second Friday in January enrollment. Do you have some familiar numbers?
These are, this is in draft form. I will, I'll send you more concrete numbers once I have them, with some comparisons. If you look at the bottom right-hand corner, where it talks about the total, we are up ten. It was thirty-two sixty on third Friday in September.
Any questions from anyone?
There, there, I'm using the term draft, once I can simplify them and I'm more comfortable to do some comparisons or whatever. I'll get that out, too.
Two thousand four, two thousand five school calendar. I believe that's in your packet on page one sixteen. And it has to do with the waiver that we've requested for the next school year. Sam?
On page one sixteen is the letter from the Department of Public Instruction approving our waiver that we have requested several months ago. We, we submitted that request. The essence of that was that, and is, that we had, currently, we have six half-days of instruction paired with six half-days of staff development in the, in the afternoon. So in other words, the kids come in in the morning and go home at noon. So, and just taking that and repackaging it to three full days of instruction and three full days of staff development. So we have, on both, the parents, much easier time, and so on. The department has approved that, and therefore, the resulting calendar for two thousand four, five school year is on page one seventeen. Teacher Association has approved this, and so the difference in the way that we would count the days is already factored into that. So tonight, I'm asking for your approval of that calendar, and then people can start planning vacations, et cetera, et cetera.
Students starting in on September first and finishing on June seventh. Am I reading that correctly?
Yeah. And I'm glad you brought it up, because the statute is not that school has to start after Labor Day. The statute is September one, and a lot of people have that confused, that, that we have to start after Labor Day. It is September one. Okay? So yes, it would start before Labor Day, in that essence, because Labor Day is so late that year.
Okay, another question.
The gray days, Labor Days, no school? For kids.
Those would be staff development days.
Yeah. And maybe there's a better term, but right now, it shows, it shows that those are the days that would come by for Labor.
Karen?
And I think parents are going to really appreciate this, knowing in advance. And for the people that are watching on TV or whatever, one of the days is on a Friday and the other two are on Mondays, which is nice. That gives the families an extra long weekend. So that, that'll be nice for families to know that.
And this is a four-year approved waiver. So, and then after that, if we want to, again, to renew it, then we have to request it again, but it is a four-year waiver.
Okay, please. And then one other question at the bottom. It says fall, parent-teacher conference, two evening for November twenty-fourth. So we're trading, what's that fall response?
Yes. We, we trade the two fall parent-teacher conferences for the, whatever dates that you have done there, and then the same in the spring.
And that's pre-K-12? There'll be two parent conferences per year?
Yes. Well, some of the buildings run at, a little different. At the elementary, it's parent-teacher conferences. Middle school, it's a parent-teacher conference as also.
Fall.
Overall, for the fall and spring?
In the spring, it's at RIS.
At RIS. And at the high school, those, parent-teacher conferences.
Any other questions on calendar that's presented? If there are none, is someone willing to make a motion to approve this school calendar for two thousand four, two thousand five? Louise?
I'm of approval of this calendar.
Do I have a second? Brenda? Anything else, Louise?
I think the combination of days is going to increase instruction for the kids. I think it's a very positive thing.
Brenda, anything else?
I think it looks good also, and I like that we moved the spring break a little earlier in the semester.
Colin, I remembered you this time. Do you have any comments?
No.
Okay. Okay. If there is no other discussion, we have a motion to approve the calendar for two thousand four, two thousand five. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Nay. Anyone abstaining? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on to item seven, technology audit.
As you see in your packet, I have recommended that we, for your approval, a technology audit. In addition to what I shared with you in, in the packet, as you know, I mean, technology in, in school districts and keeping up with that is a challenge everywhere. We have lost over a hundred and forty thousand dollars in teach money. Now, as, Wassa because the state has chosen not to fund teach, as other districts have lost a proportional amount. The district has a huge investment in technology, and so we want to make sure we're getting our best bang for, for the buck. The district also did have an ad hoc committee that helped, and, you know, those are volunteers looking for, you know, a, some professionals to come in and just review where we're at and, and help us with direction for the future. The, and audits are familiar. If you, if you, right now, remember, we talked a little bit about Wassa had an audit on their whole district, and to help them is really challenging a bunch of times to make sure we're spending money appropriately. So I think that helps, will help us also. It will give us a fresh look at this topic with some new eyes, and we have a small technology staff, as you well know, so we want to make sure that we're giving them the best that we can to, in the direction that should be heading. So with that, as I've indicated in your board packet, I am recommending to you that you contract with Imperial Consulting Group out of DeForest, Wisconsin. I am familiar with the individual who created the company, and therefore, trusts his work. I'm familiar with him for many years, and I'm, I'm very confident that we will have a, an audit that will be helpful for us. The focus of the audit will be on infrastructure, systems, effectiveness, training needs, total cost of ownership, and also looking at some possible standardization and, and other things. I'm looking at this to be on a time and materials basis, not to exceed five thousand dollars, and I'm very confident that we will get a lot of bang for our buck with what, what they're willing to do for us. So with that, I, I recommend this audit to you.
Any questions, discussion, comments?
Just a question, in the previous experience with these boards, will we get basically a report with recommendations from you? Do you know what the, that'll be the end product?
Correct, a written. Yes, good, great question.
Would they come to the board to present the report, or would they generally just do a written report?
I think, I think if it was necessary, you know, that wouldn't be a problem. I mean, we'll wait and see if that is necessary and appropriate at the time. It wouldn't be a problem if it is.
Any other questions, discussion, comments? Are none, and, oh, Kurt?
I'll move to approve the technological, the technology audit with Imperial Consulting Group, with the caveat that we don't exceed five thousand dollars.
Do I have a second? John?
Second.
Anything further, Kurt?
No.
John? Any other discussion, questions? Seeing none? All those in favor of approval of the technology audit signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Nay. Anyone abstaining? Sorry, Colin, I missed you again. Speak up if you have a comment, or just say my name. Okay. Moving on to retirements and resignation. There's one eighteen and one nineteen, and there might be some things-
And there was one added at your table tonight that came in early just before the board meeting, where Mr. Clipper will, it's in white paper at your table. I handed it out to you originally, and Mr. Clipper will share it with you.
Yes, we have two requirements I'd like the board to act on tonight. I recommend approval of the retirement of Rita Whitman, who is an elementary art teacher. And also the one that just came in tonight, recommend the approval of retirement of Sherry Rondo, who's an elementary teacher at Jefferson Elementary.
Are there any questions on the retirements? If there are none, do I have a motion to approve the retirements of Rita Whitman and Sherry?
Nope.
Louise?
I'm of acceptance.
Do I have a second? Brenda?
I do.
Any other discussion, please?
No. In reading their letters, though, it, it, it really emphasized what teaching meant to those people, and it's too bad they won't be here anymore.
Brenda, wish them well. John?
Colin, I did not have the paperwork on the last one, so I did not fax that down to you tonight. It came after we faxed, okay?
Any other questions or discussion on that? Colin, do you have any questions or discussion? All those in favor of the retirement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Nay. Anyone abstaining? Those are approved?
Thank you. Should I keep going?
Yes, please.
We're on to employment, and I believe that at the table, you have a recommendation on our teaching staff?
Anyone?
Yes. As you were aware, the, we had a English position available at the high school. We did not fill it first semester. We were interviewing, and we could not find a qualified candidate, so we reposted the job. And we held interviews on Monday, and I would like to recommend to the board that we hire on a half-year contract, Ms. Kelly Zabeldin. Kelly was recommended by the committee. Mr. Grant did background checks, and all came back excellent. The reason we're recommending a half-year contract is in the posting for the English position, we requested two certifications, a three-hundred certification, which is English, and a three-twenty certification, which is communications. And Ms. Zabeldin did not have the three-twenty certification. We did not need that specifically this semester, but we would like to have it, her to have it for, in the future, for scheduling at the high school. And so at the interview, she agreed that she would seek that certification, but we're offering a half-year contract so she can show proof that she has enrolled in a program. So when you make the, the recommendation, or makes a motion, maybe for a half-year contract only.
Thank you, John.
I'm assuming, though, that that was her decision to volunteer to get that other certification, given that we are not guaranteeing anything for next year?
Yes, we, and Brenda was at the interview, so she knows that, that we made that, we were very clear, and that was an expectation that we had. And she agreed to, to seek that. And, and the program, and she's graduated from Oshkosh, and the three-twenty certification, Oshkosh is one of the only ones in the state who offers that. So hopefully, it'll be a good fit.
She made a commitment to get that. We have not made a commitment to her for future employment, even if she gets it.
That's why it's a half-year contract. So she has to show us that she's enrolled in the program before we would then extend it.
I guess, what I'm wondering is, is there some kind of agreement? If she does that, that we would extend?
A verbal agreement, yes. As, as well as, you know, she basically has to show through performance and things like that. That's not the only way that we'd have a long-term contract. But yes, this is a position that we anticipate being on into the future.
Okay.
And that, I mean, that is a typical thing. We have another one that we will address on certification, too. You know, it's a certification issue, like Paul said, the performance, of course, that we'll weigh into it, but as far, this is a normal routine thing, as he's talking about on certification. It's not an exception for her or something.
I'll bring up a question later, so, okay.
Any other- Any other questions, discussion, comments on the hire? Seeing none, or a motion to hire? Brenda?
I'd like to make the motion for a recommendation for hiring Kelly Sevelden for the high school English position, a half-year contract.
Do I have a second for that motion? Lynn?
I second that motion.
Any other discussion, Brenda? I'm excited to have her come. Lynn? Any other questions, discussion on this motion? Seeing none? All those in favor of the hire signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Nay. Anyone abstaining? Thank you. Paul?
Kelly has a topic. I guess you.
Yellow.
Yellow. Because we offered her only a half-year contract, we still have to, just like with Paul Strand as we did later, we have to go through the formal process of issuing her not only a preliminary letter of non-renewal, a formal letter of non-renewal. Talk, before and I told her that we'd be hiring her and laying her off or non-renew her on the same night, the same process, but she understood that. It's, it's statute. It's something that we have to. So I think we have to handle these separate because of John's circumstance. The first one is to let the board issue preliminary notice of non-renewal to Kelly Sevelden.
Do I have a motion to issue a preliminary notice of non-renewal to Kelly Sevelden? Brenda?
I recommend the issue of preliminary notice of non-renewal to Kelly Sevelden.
Do I have a second for that motion? Louise?
I second that motion.
Any other comment, Brenda?
Oh, no.
Louise?
I hope she enjoyed her chat.
She will be employed with us.
This is the reason for my question before, you know, if we're making some commitment based on her willingness to gain additional certification, we obviously didn't have some commitment to sound like hiring her if she gets that despite this.
Yeah, yes, and we, and we made it clear to her, you know, that she needs to show us that, but still, like I said before, we had, we anticipate there will be a position available for her if, if she shows us that she's willing to be certified, does a good job next school year.
Any other questions or discussion on non-renewal? Voting on non-renewal for Kelly Sevelden. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Nay. Anyone abstaining? That motion carries?
The next one is I recommend that the board approve issuing Joan Crone, a 60% Head Start teacher, preliminary notice of non-renewal for her contract effective at the end of the 2003, 2004 school year. Same issue, Mrs. Crone is seeking recertification for the 2004, 2005 school year for her current position and we've, Mr. Louise and I have discussed that with her and when she can show us that she is, either has a certification or is in a program which works toward certification so we can continue her emergency licensing, then we will re-employ her in that position.
So this is a, these are timeline things because we have to issue our non-renewals before February. We are locked into having to do this now.
Yes.
Okay. Do, is there any discussion on the non-renewal for Joan Crone?
I guess, what is the certification?
It's a pre, pre-kindergarten, early childhood.
So she's certified K something and now she's going to.
Yeah, we have an emergency license for her right now. And the, but the emergency license is only a year to year to year. And with new requirements of no child left behind, the state has been getting more stringent on what emergency licenses we can get for people and they have to demonstrate that they're in a certification program, that they will receive certification within three years.
So, but I mean, her degree is, is preliminary, I mean, like what, K3? I don't even know what elementary licenses are and so she just needs the, some of the credits for pre-K. There's a difference.
Right, yeah, she doesn't have a certification that matches what she's currently in.
I see.
As far as her, the approved certification, she, and she has to, Julie has emergency for what she is teaching.
She's doing an excellent job.
Uh, sir.
Any other questions or discussion?
The biting world, VPI.
Any other questions or discussion? Do I have a motion to issue a non-renewal? Carrie?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? Any discussion, Carrie? Lynn? Any other discussion? Colin, anything? Okay, we're voting on the motion to non-renew Joan Crone. All those in favor signify.
Oh, okay, I was just gonna make sure that he abstains, he abstained or not.
Yeah.
Okay.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Nay. Anyone abstaining?
Abstain.
None abstaining. That motion carries. Thank you, Colin.
And one more, I recommend to the board that we issue a final notice of non-renewal to Paul Strand, a PRMS math teacher at the end of the 2003, 2004 school year. The reason for the final notice of non-renewal is the fact that Paul was hired for the one-year contract as well. So we still have to formally non-renew him.
Someone ready to make a motion to issue a final notice of non-renewal for Paul Strand? Lynn?
I'm of approval of the final issuance of non-renewal to Paul Strand.
Do I have a second to that motion? Louise?
I would second that.
Any discussion, Lynn?
Is this a job that, is this math position will then be posted or what's, what happens then?
We have to look at staffing at all levels of the district and then decide if it's posted or not.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Louise?
No, that was my question to.
Any other questions or discussion on that non-renewal? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Nay. Anyone abstaining? Did you miss that one higher?
That was a, I was a repeat from last time. Also got a copy case issued, so we did that last time.
So we don't need to do that?
No.
Okay. You are finished then?
Finished.
Okay, motion's carried. Thank you very much. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, we have donations on pages 120 to 128 in your agenda. We have some, these forms really are great, by the way. I think they work out really very clear. Everything's all in the center. We have $1,750 from Church Mutual Insurance to support our Merrill Debate Program. We have a $500 donation from Gerald Whitburn supporting our Merrill Debate Program. $200 in time at the school forest from Bill Wessenhop and another $120 in time spent at the school forest with Mr. Wessenhop. Central carpeting and flooring at the school forest, a donation from Mark Cooper in the amount of $60. Dan Newman, $500 for time and skill in helping to some building at the school forest. Boy, mentoring just really has, yes, people working out there. Mrs. Evans in her kindergarten class donated four nature books to the school forest, $20 to improve the library. Don Wendorf, time and equipment worth $700. Mowing our logging roads and trails. And finally, Washington PTO, a check for $381.49 to purchase a digital camera for Washington School. Do I have a motion to approve the donations that we've just mentioned? Colin?
I would, I would motion to approve these donations as you heard this read.
Do I have a second? Kurt?
I'll second.
Any discussion, Colin?
We heard a quick example tonight of just how important these donations are to the success of a lot of the different groups and extracurricular activities that are provided to students. Appreciate it.
Kurt?
A great big thank you.
Anyone else? Colin, anything?
Great to see that there's individuals willing to summarize and welcome to this.
Do we vote on a motion then to approve the donations? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Nay. Anyone abstaining? That motion carries and we thank everyone for their generous donations. Our next topic. And we will have a special budget meeting on January 28th at 5:30 PM. That's in two weeks. And then the next regular board meeting will be February 25th at 7:00 PM in the boardroom. Are there any additional items for the next agenda? There are none. So nothing, and Sally and I will put that together. And I believe Lynn and Louise have volunteered to do the radio tomorrow since Sally cannot either.
Okay, you're going to go? Okay, good. Then I will have Louise, because I have another obligation. I just threw my name out, so, great.
So Louise and I will do it. Okay, great. Anyone else is welcome to join us if we're free. Come to WJNT. Okay, we're at the end of the agenda then and you bear with me as I read this very short motion. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn into executive closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes under sections 120.13 per N1 and C and 19.85 per N1 and A deliberating concerning a case which was the subject of any judicial or quasi-judicial trial or hearing before that governmental body. C, considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. E, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. F, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems for the investigation of charges against specific persons, except for paragraph B applies, which if discussed in public would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations. And G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is likely to become involved. 118.125, for the purpose of conducting hearings on recommended student expulsions that may involve discussions of confidential student records and to discuss other matters involving student records and personal histories. That, if discussed in public, would likely have a substantial adverse effect on the reputations of the persons discussed. The purpose of this closed session is to continue the expulsion hearing and discussion of the extension of administrative contracts as necessary. Do I have a motion to adjourn to closed session? Kurt?
So.
Do I have a second? John?
Second.
Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Aye.
Brenda Maber?
Aye.
Thomas Muller?
Aye.
Colin Neumeyer?
Aye.
Louise Schutz?
Aye.
Lynn Zutner?
Aye.
Kurt Eckes?
Aye.
Carrie Kaler?
Aye.
Pat Burr?
Aye.
That motion carries and move to closed session with a brief one-minute recess, please.